Dean, please call the order.
Mr. LaFerla?
Present.
Mr. Kuzyer?
Present.
Dr. Augress?
Present.
Ms. Riley?
Present.
Mr. Hanson?
Present.
Mr. Arthur?
Present. And now if we can have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. This is different. And I suppose since this is election day, I should chastise anyone who has not voted in the audience and thank everybody who has. And since we are all elected officials, just impart our desire that all of our students over the age of eighteen will be voting today. Martha, now with "We're Proud of Our Schools" and introductions.
Thank you very much. We are proud of our schools, and this happens to be a very special week for public education. And so, we have invited Mayor Matt Walsh to come, and he came on a very busy night to share a proclamation. So, Mr. Mayor Walsh.
Thank you, Dr. Bruckner, school board members. This is a City of Council Bless Office of the Mayor proclamation. Whereas education is the backbone of our country, providing young people with knowledge, skills, and character they need to be successful, have a productive future, and contribute to society; and whereas our community can be proud of our educators and support staff members who work tirelessly to serve our children in safe, collaborative, and caring schools; and schools are community centers bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials for a common purpose; whereas the Council Bless Community School District partners with parents, organizations, and businesses on behalf of the young people in our community; and the Council Bless schools are recognized regionally and nationally for innovative innovation and progress; and whereas American Education Week provides a wonderful opportunity to celebrate public education and honor individuals who are making a difference by ensuring that every child receives a quality education. Therefore, I, Matt Walsh, Mayor of the City of Council Bless, do hereby proclaim November fourteenth through the eighteenth of two thousand and sixteen as American Education Week in the City of Council Bless, Iowa. And I further encourage all citizens to extend their commitment to public education and to the future of our children by supporting and demonstrating pride in our community schools. You guys do a great job. The staff does a great job. It's our next generation of employees, and without the work you do, Council Bless would not be successful. So, thank you very much. Thanks to the staff.
Thank you, Mayor Walsh.
I'm well aware of the fact that the mayor is out most nights doing his work, so we told him tonight that we would read the proclamation, but he said no, he wanted to be here. So, we appreciate your service very much, Mayor. We also want to honor some students tonight who have done a great job representing our school district. These talented students, through auditions, have earned the honor of being named to the Iowa All-State Orchestra Band or Choir. Under the leadership and guidance of their teachers, these students will be participating in the All-State Festival November seventeenth through nineteenth. I would like to invite each student present with us tonight to come forward when I call your name. Parents in the audience are invited to stand as your child comes forward. Named to All-State -- oh, they get a Star Award. For those of you in the audience, the Student Star Award is the highest honor that our Board of Education gives. We want you to know how proud we are of you, and we hope that you display it proudly. So, at graduation, when people walk by, you say, "Oh, yes, I'm a Star Student." And some of you have been a Star Student multiple times, which is great. Named to the All-State Orchestra are Genesis Obando Viola from TJ and Abe Viola String-Bass from AL. Right up there, okay? We'll have others join you. Named to All-State Band is Shay Behrens Trumpet from Abraham Lincoln. Named to All-State Choir are Brendan Gier AL. Hunter Gibson from Thomas Jefferson. Cassie Higgins, I believe, is here from Thomas Jefferson. Sorry, Kevin. I know Kevin. Tatiana Sandoval from Thomas Jefferson. Ashlyn Wiley from Thomas Jefferson. Ben Jones from Abraham Lincoln is not able to join us tonight due to work, but we want to celebrate him and notice that this is his second year to make All-State Choir. And finally, Riley Pope from Abraham Lincoln is also not here because she's practicing tonight along with seven other Abraham Lincoln Band members and instructor Mark Mendel for the Southwest Iowa Honor Marching Band in preparation for an appearance at the Holiday Bowl in San Diego in December. I want to thank very much Travis Walker, who is here tonight, and he himself is a recent award winner. I asked him if he would tell us just a minute about his award. Would you? Or you can just tell me, and I'll tell them.
I was recently surprised. Monday, Patty Gillespie and Judy O'Brien came to me during my fifth hour, and I was setting up for rehearsal at the school, and they came to me with the Delta Capodanno Award for Excellence in Teaching.
You don't have to have that award if you have students like this. So, congratulations, students, on this announcement of your All-State, and good luck to you the rest of this year. I think Diane wants a picture, and if anyone else wants a picture, you're welcome to come up for it. Congratulations to our students. We also have excellent staff members. And since tonight is the first meeting of November, we are going to recognize the staff members of the month for October. Could I please have Lynette Peterson come forward so we could recognize her? Your own sharing section. Lynette Peterson has been with the Council Bless Schools for four years. Here is what her nominators said about her. "Mrs. Peterson is the representation of how we, as educators, should work every day to help our students become responsible citizens who can succeed in a changing world. She models this in her actions, words, and demeanor. She greets the children every morning with a warm and welcoming smile and words of encouragement so they start every day with a positive experience. She makes sure our kids feel they're valued and empowers them to make good choices and develop good problem-solving skills. Mrs. Peterson lives the mission of the district in so many ways. One example is how she helps ensure every child can get to school no matter the obstacles. On a recent trip to pick up a child whose family had been evicted the night before, she made sure the student felt comfortable and safe and ordered food of her own to put in the child's backpack for later. She knows all the students, their backgrounds, their needs. She knows if they need a warm high five or a stern reminder of expectations. She also works hard to make sure everyone in the building has what they need to be successful. Mrs. Peterson also shares the good news of the school through Hoover Facebook page. She does a fabulous job. She engages parents through posts of school events, celebrations, and awesome Hoover smiles. Mrs. Peterson has an unlimited amount of compassion and drive that allows her to thrive in the position, and she demonstrates to others what living the mission really looks like on a daily basis. Lynette is supported here tonight by Hoover Principal Brittany Hetrick and many other members of her fan club. So, Mrs. Peterson, on behalf of the Board of Education and the Community Education Foundation, I would like to give you this memento, this heavy memento, Support Staff Employee of the Month for October 2016, and a gift certificate to go to the Three Sixty Steakhouse. And now I want to introduce you to our Licensed Staff Member of the Month, Kim Alexander, who is a second-grade teacher at Carter Lake. Kim Alexander is in her tenth year with Council Bless Schools. Here's what her nominators said about her. "Mrs. Alexander understands that it is her relationship with students, that caring and collaborative community within her classroom which will ensure that students feel safe and ready to learn. She sets high expectations for herself and her students, requiring them to work through issues and letting them know they're always part of her classroom family. Mrs. Alexander is a former math model teacher and continues to hone her skills so that she can share that experience with her students and peers. She's a leader in our building-wide expectations for pillars and for IB attributes. Her students know how they are to be within her class, the building, our community, and in the world. Mrs. Alexander is engaging, sure, calm, and soft with her students. Soft seems appropriate as a descriptor in that so many of our students benefit from this contrast in their lives. Kim is supported here tonight by Carter Lake Principal Doreen Canuth and other members of her fan club, including family members. So, Kim? On behalf of the Council Bless Schools, our school board, and the Community Education Foundation, congratulations on being our Licensed Staff Member of the Month, and please enjoy a night out at the Three Sixty Steakhouse.
Congratulations, Kim and Lynette, and thank you for being such valuable assets for our district. Now we come to a portion, our public participation. If there are any members of the audience who want to come up and speak, you may do so right now. Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. I'm so stressed out about this microphone thing. I can't. Sorry. Now we come to the portion where we have approval of our agenda.
I move approval of the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
First and second. Any questions or changes? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and the motion carries. Now we have approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of October twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen. Is there a motion?
I move approval of the minutes.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any questions or changes on those minutes? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and the motion carries. Now we will go to the public participation portion, and there's less people here now, but if there's anyone who wants to come speak to the board, please step up and state your name and address, and we'd love to hear from you. Anyone at all? Okay, seeing none, we will start with the superintendent's report. Dr. Bruckner.
Thank you very much. And on our agenda tonight are school improvement plans. Those are all in the board packet, and you got an opportunity before the meeting, for those of you that don't know. The board members got to meet with principals and assistant principals to talk about school improvement plans. Dr. Vorthman is out of town this evening, but he will talk about the whole process of school improvement at our November twenty-second meeting.
Informational presentations, nutrition services report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm sorry, I scared all the people away that were here, but I didn't bring any food for them. I had a report in your board packet, but I have a few other things I'd like to share with you about the nutrition program. We have expanded a few things and have some -- there we go. Look at our scope of work to start out with. So, we are primarily funded by USDA with our school breakfast and lunch program, our summer breakfast and lunch program, our after-school snacks, which is primarily used by the Twenty-First Century Grant Schools and other groups that would like to have after-school snacks if they have a learning activity going on in the school. We do the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program, which is at eight elementary schools, which provides a snack of a fruit or a vegetable four days a week throughout the school year. We use the Commodity Foods Program, and we also are a part of Farm to School, and we purchase from about four different local farmers in the area throughout the year, depending on what's available to us. We also have an Iowa Department of Public Health SNAP or Food Stamp Education Grant called Pick a Better Snack that we've been participating in now for -- I saw the lady in charge of the state, we were trying to remember how long we've been doing this, thirteen or fourteen years that we've been doing that particular program. We also are the keepers of the Heartland Food Bank Backpack Program, so we house them at the warehouse and then send them out weekly to the schools to send home with the kids on Fridays. We get about -- this year, we're getting four hundred and forty-eight backpacks per week that we can send home to ten of the elementary schools. It's only an elementary program. We got about a hundred and six more this year after I convinced them what CEP was and that we didn't care about Free and Reduced anymore. So, they did -- they finally caught on to what I was saying. Children's Hospital Obesity Prevention Grant is also a grant that does similar things with the Pick a Better Snack Program, and we are filling in where we don't have the Pick a Better Snack Program because the schools didn't qualify because of their used-to-be-free-and-reduced percentage. So, we now pick up all the second graders at the -- all of the elementary schools and then the four schools that didn't qualify when we originally have applied for the grant. So, now K through three all receive nutrition education in the classroom six times a year, taught by -- I have two dieticians on staff that do that. We also have a Heartland Food Bank Summer Adults Meals Grant. Heartland Food Bank in Omaha is the food bank for Southwest Iowa, so that's why we get funding from them, and they service our community. We fed about thirty-five hundred adult meals this summer, so if an adult brought a child to a summer lunch program site, then they got a free breakfast or lunch, depending on the time of the day. That amounted to a little over thirteen thousand dollars that we received to do that. We also have an Arby's franchise grant, a local franchiser of Arby's stepped up with Share Our Strength and Iowa Western Foundation. They provide us with funds so that we can promote summer feeding and also breakfast promotions.
How many years is that?
This is our third year. As far as our income and our finances, about eighty-four percent of our income comes from the federal and state reimbursement that we get for breakfast, lunch, and snacks, and also for our summer breakfast and lunch reimbursement. So, with the CEP program, the Community Eligibility Program, that has increased pretty dramatically in the amount of federal dollars that we get. We only get seven percent of our income from cash payments. I was looking back to before we did CEP, and it was about twenty and a half percent that we used to get in cash receipts. Four percent come from our Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Grant, and two percent come from the other grants and rebates that we receive. As far as expenses go, about forty-nine percent of our expenses are on food and supplies. Forty-two percent is spent on wages and benefits, and about nine percent for all other expenses. We are reimbursed at the rate of a dollar ninety-nine for a free breakfast and three dollars and fifteen cents for a free lunch. Reduced is a dollar sixty-nine for breakfast and two seventy-five for lunch. We also receive a federal reimbursement for paid lunches, and that's thirty-seven cents for lunch, and I think it's about thirty cents for breakfast that we receive for that also. So, we are in the black.
The -- just to clarify something, I mean, I'd have made myself clear when Virginia and I were talking, but we actually, our income over expenses is about two hundred and fifty thousand for the fifteen, sixteen year. There was an adjustment the auditor's made for about ninety-three thousand. I think that's what we got mixed up.
I don't have the auditor's report yet, so he's the money guy.
This is the first year we're over five million. That's impressive.
Yes, it is. It is. I did receive a half a million dollars for May and June's reimbursement. That's been my goal, is to, for a month, I get a half a million dollars back, and I haven't quite made that except for that May and June, which we just had a few days in June, so -- but that's been my goal. This sheet shows you a little about the CEP status of our schools. I know there's lots of numbers here. The first one, if it has a single star by it, means that we started our four-year opportunity with this reimbursement in fourteen fifteen. It has two stars, it means we started in fifteen sixteen, so last year. The four that are red are schools that are not a part of the CEP program because they do not qualify at this point in time. So, the numbers that you see for the red schools are the numbers from April first, because that's the number that we go by in order to qualify a school. So, we had to have, would like to have, forty percent eligibility, so that second number is the number that we're looking at so that we could have enough funds in order to provide free meals for everyone. Ideally, you would like sixty-five percent because there's a multiplier that we use. We take it times one point six. So, that sixty-five times one point six is a hundred percent. So, we would like, those are the numbers that we're really looking for. But if we don't have that, then what we can do is mix and match the schools that we do have so that we get the most reimbursement back that we possibly can. So, I have played the number game here for two years, trying to get the most back according to what our ISP number is, which is the Identified Student Percentage that we're looking at.
And that's what you want at forty percent?
Forty percent is when we --
Or me at forty percent?
Right.
To qualify.
Right. You see some say potentially eligible, and that's between thirty percent and thirty-nine point ninety-nine percent. They will allow you to enroll those schools in the program with those percentages, but we have to prove to them that we will have enough money to pay for the program then.
So, do we?
Do we what?
For all four of those, if we enrolled them?
I don't think we -- financially, I don't think we'd be on solid ground to do that with those four schools.
What about the two of them that are the higher percentages?
Perhaps.
Preston and Lewis and Clark.
I mean, we keep an eye on them. We generally see the percentages come from what we call direct certification, which those are the families that are on food assistance, Family Investment Program, foster children, homeless, migrant families. Traditionally, that number goes up after the first of the year because of employment usually goes up a little bit after Christmas. So, we start looking at those numbers then to see if they're going to be up, because once you are at that number, then you stay at that number. So, I watch them very carefully to see if we can do that, and I also look at other programs that we might be able to do this in as well. I just haven't found any that I feel real comfortable with financially to do that, so -- but I am always looking because I would really like to be able to share this with all of our students, and so we will continue to do that. Any other questions about all that data on there?
It seems like a good time for me to say, to do a call-out publicly for Virginia. She's really done a masterful job of figuring this out. We were a district that jumped on this possibility much earlier than almost anybody, and Virginia has been so careful in, as she says, figuring out how to serve the highest number of kids. And we went into it with a little bit of trepidation at first, but you've increased our confidence level, and that's because she knows the system inside and out, and every time I get anything about a program possibility, Virginia is ahead of us, and she already knows about it. So, she's done a very, very good job.
So, these are just some statistics about fifteen sixteen. We added three more schools in fifteen sixteen. We added TJ, we added Hoover, we added Kern, so now we have a total of eleven of our fifteen schools are participating in this program. At breakfast, TJ increased their breakfast counts by a hundred and nine percent. We're feeding about two hundred and fifty students there for breakfast every morning. Kern increased their counts by thirty-eight percent because they were already there, because they were there for the Twenty-First Century before school things, and so they were already eating a lot of breakfast with us. Hoover increased their counts by forty-one percent, and I think for an elementary school, I think that's a tremendous number as well. Overall, our breakfast count is up fifty-nine percent, and out of that, ninety percent of all breakfast that we serve are in CEP schools. Lunch, not quite as good numbers because those three schools already had really good lunch numbers before they joined the CEP program. So, TJ increased by about eleven percent. Kern increased their counts by eight percent. Hoover increased theirs by fifteen percent. So, overall, when I look at all of the schools across the district, it was a fifty-five percent increase. Eighty-eight percent of all of our lunches are in the CEP schools.
Does participation at schools, I mean, are you graded at all? Are we evaluated at all by how many people participate with the program or don't, or how many students we serve?
Nobody's really auditing or grading us on that number, but that's a number that I'm constantly looking at, because if I don't have good participation, then the CEP program isn't going to work for us. So, that's why we have to constantly look at those things, and that's why those grants that we have, like from Arby's, is a great thing for us so that we can market our breakfast program, we can market the summer program, because the numbers are the key. Because if I have five people to serve lunch and only fifty show up, I have way too much labor. Those five people can serve five hundred kids, so those are the kinds of things that we look at so that we make the most of the money that we have. at so that we make the most of the money that we have. And we do lots of marketing in the summer to market that program, and we are going to start marketing here shortly with breakfast so that we try and get some more kids in for breakfast, because that's really where we see the numbers going, is into our breakfast counts.
Have we seen any increase with the elementary schools, given the later start time? Just curious.
I don't know that that's really affected our, at this point in time, we are even with the 1516 numbers, or a little bit ahead. So, no, I have not seen that be an issue.
In our earlier meetings with administrators for speed dating, attendance was a big topic of discussion, and to see TJ breakfast increase by 109%, that tells me that kids are not only going to school for breakfast, but they're wanting to go there and they're attending, yeah, so.
So, just some overall statistics. Our count for breakfast last year for the entire district was 466,389, or about 2650 per day on average, which was about a 17% increase from previously. So, we increased about 416 more kids eating breakfast. Lunch was 1,188,110, which is about 6751 per day, which is about a 5% increase. My goals really are, I would like breakfast, we are going to hit 3,000 this year for breakfast. My goal would be to hit 5,000 for breakfast. Lunch, we do hit 7,000 usually one or two days a week for lunch, so I want that to become our new norm, that we always are at 7,000, and again, I would like 7,500 to 8,000 kids eating lunch every day. So, when I look at meal equivalents, which is when I take all of those programs that we do, and we put them together into what is a, what we look at financially as a lunch, so we call it a meal equivalent. So, when I do that, all those other things that I do besides breakfast and lunch, it gives us about 1,741,582 meal equivalents, which is about 214,000 over 1415. So, that is a number that I find very useful to budget for and that we look at what we're, where we're headed with that number. And then just some fun numbers. The students drank 93,750 gallons of milk last school year. They ate 30,000 pounds of chicken, 30,000 pounds of beef, 14,000 pounds of pork, 5,000 pounds of turkey, 125,000 pounds of potatoes, and 26,000 pounds of cheese, most of that on pizza.
Very nice.
I'm laughing because I can see the cow.
That poor cow is just really working overtime. 23,000 student contacts at all of our elementary schools, K through three, with our Pick a Better Snack Nutrition Education, and I really feel like we have really done a very good job with that because there isn't a student at TJ that comes in that cafeteria that doesn't stop at the salad bar and the fruit bar. So, it was pretty easy for us to meet the requirement that they had to have a half a cup of fruit or vegetable on their tray before they left the serving line. It's not really a big deal for us. We can do it pretty easily with our kids.
Thank you so much for all you do.
Sure, thank you.
That's wonderful.
Thanks, Virginia.
Yeah. Now we are to the resolution portion of the agenda. Approval of request for modified supplemental amount for open enrollment out, limited English proficiency, and increased enrollment. Do we need to talk about that before we do a motion? Okay. Is there a motion?
I will move to approve the request from the SBRC for a modified supplemental amount for open enrollment out of $871,794, limited English proficiency of $244,688.40, and increased enrollment of $33,519.20.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. Thank you, Susan. Is there any discussion on this? Any questions?
Would like an explanation.
Dean to explain?
Explanation?
Dean, what we're doing here?
We did this last year.
Mr. Wilson.
This is an annual request to the SBRC that school districts do, based upon enrollment counts in early October, and as they go up or down, excuse me, as they go up, what the thinking is, is that it's going to cost a school district more money to service these students in the school year, so they give us extra spending authority in order to do that. Last year was about a million two. It's a little over a million this year, and the reason it's down is because of the, let me find that one here, of the increased enrollment, the 33519, that, I checked with John McGreevy, who's the guru of our counts, and he verified that the way that they calculate that, that number was down from last year. But as you can see, our open enrollment numbers were up. So, it's a little over a million dollars that we get extra spending authority for, but the board has to request it from the SBRC, hence your vote tonight.
That's a thank you. Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, Dean?
Who seconded the motion? I'm sorry.
Susan did.
Susan did, thank you.
Susan seconded the one earlier.
Mr. LaFurla.
Yes.
Ms. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Gazire.
Yes.
Dr. Ogres.
Yes.
Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Mr. Arthur.
Yes. The motion is carried. Now we're to the approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda contains business items, personal action, claims, and accounts, and the board would gratefully acknowledge and accept a monetary gift from memory, is it bleth or bleath?
Bleth.
Bleth, to Lewis and Clark Elementary School, and it's a wonderful gift. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Scott. Second?
Second.
Excellent. Any discussion? Dean?
Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla.
Yes.
Mr. Gazire.
Yes.
Dr. Ogres.
Yes.
Ms. Riley.
Yes.
Mr. Arthur.
Yes. That the consent agenda is carried, and if there are no new items here, or any items, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.